To call this meeting to order, please. Thank you all for coming. Join me in the pledge of, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Let's hear it nice and loud, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
United States of America.
Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands.
One.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Ah, Ms. Hooper is with us. Do we have Mr. West? Okay. Well, welcome, Ms. Hooper.
Thank you.
Takes a few minutes to get the audio on, then the audio off. Okay, we're all in attendance. And adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Superintendent?
No, ma'am, I do not have any adjustments. I actually do have a clarification. Just because I apologize, I need to apologize that it took us a while to get this agenda exactly right, but I, under executive session, that needs to begin at seven o'clock. So I, it's just a clarification.
Then I think we have to have, we'll come up with a motion. Because we intend, with any kind of good fortune, to have a vote back in public session after the executive session, right?
Correct.
So we'll have to add that. I have a sort of motion written out as a, see if it works when we get there. Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting of November 18th, 2020.
All moved?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
You know, I must be willing you to say that because I'm like, okay, don't say Ms. Schuman, say Mrs. Shumway, and then you say it every time, so.
I can put her name on a card and.
Yeah, right. Right.
Jana, Jana, look, look at this. Two pieces of paper that say.
Now you just gotta remember to read them.
Yeah, right. I, I approve the minutes.
Thank you. I do as well. Motion passes unanimously. I just wrote it bigger to see if there's any hope for me at all.
Okay.
Okay, I apologize again. Okay, um, personnel none. Mr. Superintendent, your report, please.
Okay, I will try to do this fairly expeditiously, but I want to make sure to answer or attempt to answer questions that you might have. I have a lot of paper, and so I apologize if it doesn't look like I'm looking at you, but I am trying to, to read through notes and such that I've been given. Or I've written myself. First of all, I want to say it may be, it may be a little challenging to answer some of the questions around the printouts, and I apologize for getting them late. But Amanda has not been here for a while, and so we had a little trouble, we had a lot of trouble, to be honest with you, coordinating the financials. But overall, and even if she was here, I would tell you, it's a little bit challenging because I think it's, it's, um, it's a little bit, um, whacked because of the COVID relief funds and the process that we have to use. On our budget, it, it's disproportionate, the effect is disproportionate because we, we received over 1.3 million, you know, 1.3 million dollars, and I'll tell you more about that in a second. And it's a reimbursement model. So we'd have, we've had to expend money from lines that are in the regular budget, and we have to pay them, and then we have to get reimbursed for them. Hopefully, at the end of January, January moving forward, it'll, that'll take care of itself because we have to, if you remember, I've told you this a number of times, that the COVID relief funds have to be spent by the end of December. As a matter of fact, we have to seek reimbursement before the end of December. So they not only have to be spent, they have to be spent, we have to be get the bills, all that type of stuff, and then seek reimbursement. And you probably are not surprised to hear that the DOE doesn't really turn it around all that quickly, so we're not necessarily going to get the money back. So it's, um, it's, it does put a stress, it is a stress for our, our budget. And so, but everything from my perspective, broad perspective, and talking to Amanda a little bit, and, and payroll is, things are in pretty good shape. We are, and I don't have the percentages in front of me, but we are, we've received revenues in pretty much all areas. And we're on pace with the state, which is our biggest area of revenues. And so overall, the, the, the financial, the big picture financial is, is pretty solid. Looked my note, wrote myself a text and the looks higher because we got a $25,000 revenue for, for food nutrition. And find where that is. So yeah, that, that probably wouldn't have stuck out. So I don't know why I necessarily put that there. So I, whatever, you can ask me questions with respect to that. Let me, let me quickly, while you, while you're formulating your questions, let you know that I think I had shared, I know I had shared with you before, when we filed for our COVID relief fund two, the second half of that, that application process, they gave us a spot where we could ask for, if, if there are monies left over, that if we were going to, if we wanted additional money, how much would we think we could spend? I put in, based upon mostly the, the request from Mike, that we could use $200,000 more. I got a message that, that the additional funds were now available for application, and I had one day to fill out the application. That wasn't, that wasn't bad because I already knew what I was going to be asking for. So I submitted the application, have not heard back yet. Expect to hear back before the end of this week. That all sounds really good, except you have to remember that those funds, like the other funds, have to be expended before the end of December. And again, it's worse than that. They not only have to be expended, we have to seek reimbursement before the end of the month. So the time, the turnaround on that is, is very tight, and that whole 200,000 is focused on technology and technology infrastructure. And Mike is on this, so if you'd like to ask him, he will tell you that I've been all over him to get prices and invoices and, and such. So we can get that, get that going and get the reimbursement before the, or seek reimbursement before the end of the month. So that's great news and horrible news at the same time. I did want to report that we did open bids. Sue and Ida and I opened bids for the tractor that we're purchasing through COVID Relief Two Funds and for the school nutrition van. I don't remember what the day was, we opened them, but we opened them together, and those bids have been awarded. The tractor has been awarded, tractor bid has been awarded to Manchester Motors, and the school nutrition van has been awarded to Charlie's. Ironically, sent out four different places to bid, bid packets to four different places for both the tractor and the van. Three out of the four places did send in bids for the tractor. One chose not to. Sent out four different companies, bid packets for for the van, and only one company chose to bid. And ironically, because it's two locations, they actually sent in three bids, but with the lowest bid actually not conforming to the bid specs. And so that was, was not accepted. So both were, were well within the budget, and so those bids have been awarded. Remote absentee upset. Oh, absenteeism, let's see, is.
Can I ask you a quick question, please?
Sure, sure.
Sure. Do you have any idea why those other, what, three folks didn't bother to turn in a bid?
No, actually, it's a great question because two of them actually called me and talked to me about the, the bid specs and, and whatever, and that didn't get any indication that they were not planning to bid. And, and I made sure that we had a GM product, a Ford product, and a Dodge product, because when I had done my research, I saw they, they, both of those lines of, of vans, or those companies had vans that would fit, I, I knew would fit the bill for what we're looking for, so I don't know.
And, and I'd like to just go back a little bit further. In, in a perfect world, if we went back to the articles, what should be the percentage that we're looking at?
Yeah, I knew you were gonna ask. I, I meant that I didn't, I didn't write it down on my paper. So this is through the end of November, so. So we're five twelfths. So that is what, almost 50%, 40, 42%, something like that, of the way through the year. So it's like 42.5%.
So we're looking at percentage remaining of.
Yeah, I didn't get any sense from either Amanda or from Ida that there was a concern about anything that was left over, and, and the places where there was a little tiny bit of concern was really more in an area of places that we're expecting some COVID reimbursement. Yep, yep.
Okay, okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. I did send out the information on the bids, by the way, and so you should have received them. If for some reason you didn't get them, please let me know, and I will send them out to you. I was asked a question, asked a report. There was some news. I can't remember if it was a national or local, about some concerns about the, the number of students, the absentee issue with students who are being taught remotely, and wondered how that applied to us here in, in Winthrop. And we do have a concern. I, I can tell you, I attended the high school staff meeting this morning, and that was one of the things they were talking about is how to address the, primarily the remote students who were, who were not doing well. And I know that they, it's been addressed at the, the middle school. I don't have the numbers, and Megan gave them to me. Megan's here, maybe I'll let her speak to them. But it is higher than our in-person absentee rate. And it's, uh, you know, it's, 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 well, I, I'm going to address that in a future, in a meeting in the spring, when we, when we start to project for next year, but I, I think there's a, a real commitment, and I think we're fortunate that we have remote-only teachers who have the opportunity to, to interact with those parents and those kids. But there are some places it's really, really bad. And I can't find my notes. That's what I'm looking for. I apologize. Where, you know what, Megan's here, so I don't hate to put her on the spot, but Megan, do you want to jump in? And there you are, Megan with the new haircut.
Um, yeah, so we ran some reports from each of the schools, and it pretty much aligns with some of the concerns across the state. So we are struggling, it's a little bit, I don't know, I, it's, it feels concerning when I'm going to say it, but I want you to know that this is, this is happening across the state as far as attendance with some remote stuff. But there is some definite highlights that have been happening in our school that I want to make sure to share with you folks also. So about 17% of the current remote students at the grade school were absent five days or more, and they're, for the first trimester, there are 48 days. So that's a little bit over the 10% threshold for, for worrying about absenteeism. However, a bright point is those teachers have been, kind of like Mr. Hodgkin says, have been meeting with those families. They actually kind of held unofficial conferences to just check in with the parents. And there are five students who actually had chronic absenteeism that went back to in-person instruction after talking about the struggles that they're having with the remote instruction. So that doesn't necessarily seem like a highlight, but those students now are improving in their attendance and, and receiving services and the instruction that they need to be successful. At the middle school, it was run a little bit differently. Ms. Chris ran some reports herself, and her, her percentage was a little bit higher, but similarly, her teachers met with parents, and we had a couple students also from the middle school who have decided to return to in-person learning as they think they can access their education a little bit better that way. So I think those are real highlights where, you know, families are able to reflect on the process and decide, is this really working for us? And those teachers are engaging in those conversations with families. Communication has been top-notch, for sure. What parallels a lot of the state is that at the high school, around 28% had five or more days out of the quarter also. So it was a little bit higher, but I think in the news story, I don't remember which school it was, it was a larger school, I believe it was Portland, they were over 30%. I think they had said 32%. They were having absenteeism. So again, we're falling in line with some of those high schools. But I want to highlight that in that first quarter, 24% of our remote students ended up with honor roll or high honors too. So we may have a proportion of students who their attendance may be lacking, and their grades are following suit. But we also have, you know, almost the exact same amount of students, the same proportion, who are, who are really taking advantage of what we're offering and what our teachers are offering at the high school. So I think it's great to also highlight that we do have around 20, 24% of our remote students that were at honor roll or high honors also. So our struggles are consistent, but I think our celebrations with a quarter of those students doing so well speaks volumes to our teachers, to our administration over there, and to the students themselves who are, who are pushing themselves. So that's the information I kind of crunched for, for that piece. I'll take any questions if you folk have, folks have it.
I, I just, I just want to thank you for, I know, attacking the problem, and it sounds as though it, you know, you're trying to really remediate the problem, so I really appreciate that. Thank you. Any other thoughts from school committee people? Mr. Superintendent, can I, can I again go back?
Certainly.
May I go backwards? So I want to go back to the vehicle memo. In the memo, you have on both sides, having to do with both vehicles, I recommend awarding the, the V8 van, you know, I recommend purch, purchasing, and I recommend awarding. So on, on my agenda, then I wrote myself a note that says, do you need a motion? Were you hoping for a motion? Because we can whip two together.
Well, when I, when I wrote that, I wasn't sure, but as I reread the policy, it doesn't say that. But I, I guess I wanted to give the committee the opportunity to review that before, you know, if you feel like we need to, but the policy doesn't require that.
No, I, I don't know. I just wrote myself this question.
Yeah.
Asked, and was ready to do it if that's what you thought you needed.
I don't think so. No, not after reviewing the policy. Probably should have changed the memo.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The, the next thing I was asked to, to look into the auditor update, I think we were hoping, I think, I know at least the, the chair was hoping that we would have the auditor's letter for by now, and I checked with our, with the town manager, and we have not received the management letter at this point, and so I, I all I can tell you is that I, I followed up on it and told them that we were disappointed that we don't have it at this point, and look forward to getting it so we can review it with the school board. I know that the person is, is scheduled to meet with the, I don't know if the town manager or the, the, I don't, I know it's not, it might be Monday. A Monday, I'm meeting with the, the town council, and I don't believe the auditor is meeting with them, but she might be. But it's, anyway, we don't have the, the report. I just, and I know that's been a frustration because it's, it's December, and we have a, we have a deadline to meet with the state. And I can tell you from my past experience that there are, it's pretty common, not great practice, but it's pretty common to ask the state to extend the deadline, and they seem to be all too willing to do that. So maybe something that we have to bear in mind. We're sort of in a tough position. Actually, Chairperson Gary, you might speak to this a little bit more, that we we are, we have to do, we have to have to share the auditor with the town, is that, as I understand it? And that, that is the auditor, and, and I'm very familiar with, RKO is our auditor, and I've had great success with them in the past, so we just need to talk about the timing and, and try to get that information back as soon as possible. And it's, I think it's frustrating that it's not in at this point. But there's nothing else I can really share with you at that, at this time.
The, may I add something?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the, the, the only thing that really concerns me, and all the people in the school committee know this already, is that in that management letter that is, you then followed where the auditor actually reports out during one of our meetings, the audit report for the school. But in that management letter, it has commendations and recommendations. And if it comes early enough, like eight, nine years ago, it was coming in to the school system around, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody that can remember, closer to October.
Yeah.
And what, that, that makes it just a little bit easier for us to take a look at the recommendations and see if it's possible to start to implement those recommendations at that time in the school year. When the management letter comes really, really late, and, and that's what's been happening the last several years, it's so late in the school year that it's very, very difficult for us to accommodate or start to work on those recommendations. And so when a full, another accounting cycle comes along, what they're liable to report out to the town council is that the school committee made absolutely no pro, progress on the recommendations from the year before. Well, we, we only got them a few, you know, months. So that's, that's the thing that scares me, is sort of a catch-22 in a way.
Yeah, and I, I wanted to say that, I mean, obviously, I wasn't here nine years ago, but that, that scenario that you just described is what I experienced as a superintendent of the districts when I first started. And I don't know if, if something had to do with some changes in, in accounting procedures or, or practices or whatever, but you know, I, I can say that within, you know, the first five or six years as superintendent, we routinely had our management letter and the complete audit by mid-October at the latest, and could do exactly as you just said. And then I think I had shared with, with you when we were talking about that, when I was in, the last place I was a superintendent, just for the one year, we didn't get the management letter till almost March. And that became absolutely useless in terms of making any changes, you know, benefiting from, and the reason you do an audit isn't just because it's required, but because they will make recommendations for accounting practices and, and budgeting that you know, are, are good for the community and good for, for the school committee to follow. But when it comes this late, it does make that challenging, so.
So sometimes the phrase, oh, I'm sorry. Sometimes the phrase then is thrown around that the school committee is non-compliant, and that's, that's not, that's not how, that's not true.
Yep. Okay, the last thing I have on here is, it's not actually on yours, is, and I meant to do this, and Tiff is here. So, you know, I, quite a while ago, it was suggested by one of the school committee members to take a look at our website and to try to do what the, the town website does in terms of getting community members to, to I don't want to say sign up, but basically to be able to get information that they were, you know, looking to get from the, that was on our school site, but sort of all over the place, and, and figure out a way to, to, to make that happen. And and so I talked to our town manager right after that request was made, and sort of determined that our website and the town's website are not exactly the same. So I had asked Tiff Shaw to take a look at the possibility of doing that, and, and to see if there's some mechanism, and she has an update, which I could do for you, but I think Tiff will do it much better. So I asked her if she would be willing. There, she, she's in the Bahamas or somewhere.
Nice.
Yeah, so Tiff, if you don't mind updating this committee, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Good evening. I am in the Bahamas. I take every opportunity I can to get a little sun, even if it's virtual. So I did look into it. I talked with Richard Fortin, who runs the website for the town, about what it is they use. And he said that they, the, the service they use, he gave me the name, and I looked into it. It was very expensive. But when I talked to the company, they really were geared towards local government. They were not set up to work with schools necessarily. And they weren't compatible with Google Sites, which is what we use to run our websites. So it would have meant a, a pretty big change and quite an expense for us to do. So I got thinking about that. And so here's, here's my proposal to how we solve this problem. My understanding is what we're looking for is a way for community members, parents, et cetera, to know when there's an update they should pay attention to on our websites. Whether it be the grade school, the high school, the middle school, or the district website. So here's my proposal that I'm willing to take on and to do for you to save us a lot of money. And I think it'll be a pretty easy to implement. What I would suggest is I can create a Google form that parents, community members, et cetera, can fill out with their email address that they want used for alerts. They can sign up for any of the three schools, or all of the three schools and the district, or just the district, whatever they want. They can choose those from those four options. And then I can create an email group for each school and for the district. Doesn't take long to do it all. Once they're set up, the, the, this, you know, getting it set up at first will take a little time, but not a lot. And then if just people want to get added, it's really easy to add them to the group. And then when there's something that we want to make sure people see, like I'm in charge of the district website, and I'm in charge of the high school website. So for those two, if there's something we want people on those lists to see, I can just send an email to that, that group and say, just so you know, there's an update on the website you should pay attention to. Please go look at the website. I can, I also had told Jim that I was willing to set up the groups for the grade school and the middle school, and the, and then pass those off to the webmasters for those two schools so that they could use those. I'm willing to keep those updated, so it's all in one place and easily streamlined so that we don't have too many people trying to update things because that can get messy. And then that way, those, those schools could also use those same group email, email groups to send notifications to their people that want to be kept up to date. One thing I was concerned about with the program that the town uses and, or any program like that, is I was concerned that if it's not set up properly, then anytime I go in and add anything to the website, they're going to get an email. And we don't want that. There's a lot of things that you put up there that people aren't going to want to get notified six or seven times a day, which sometimes I'm in there six or seven times a day making changes, adding things, updating things. And there are things that are useful for people, but they don't necessarily need to get another email telling them that it's there. It could be an update to our, our district staff directory because positions have changed or people have changed, and we're just updating that. People don't need an announcement about that. So I was worried about flooding people's boxes as well and having them being annoyed by that. I think this, this helps curtail that by putting it in our hands to say, this is something we really feel that our public needs to know, and we want to make sure their attention is called to it. And then we could send an email to that group saying, this is there for you. Please go check it out. So that's what I propose. I, I'd love to hear your input if that's, fits the bill or not.
Shumway? Ms. Shaw, I am so excited that you solved this problem and came up with a solution that is going to work. That's exactly what I had envisioned, something that we'd be able to alert our community about when, when we did have something go up there. One request, is there a way to have One request, is there a way to have like school committee minutes or school committee agendas be its own separate category? There may be just some community members that might want to know when the agenda gets posted or when the minutes get posted. You guys can think about that, but I just am wondering if that might be good to have as its own separate group versus it being like the high school or the district updates, since they may not be parents per se that want all of those district updates, but just want specific school committee updates.
Sure. So we could have, that could be a fifth choice where just specifically school committee updates. Whether it's the, like you said, the minutes or not, or like the policy minutes, you know, when something gets put up, you know, whatever. Yes, I mean, it's limitless. I don't want to make there be so many choices. We end up with 50 groups because then that gets really difficult to manage as well. But I I would, I would understand and it would make sense to have one specifically for that, like you suggested for the school committee. And that's, again, it's easy to do. It's just creating another group. So I think if we have specific ones like that, we think would be really helpful, then I have no problem setting those up as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Oh, Ms. Shaw, you made her very happy.
I aim to please. So does that mean that this sounds like this is what you want me to do and I can move forward with this plan and get a sub-form set up or is there something we have to do officially or?
Ms. Dyke gets very happy.
A great idea.
Yeah, let's give it a shot and see how it works. So I think you can all appreciate why I asked Tiff to to give you the update and not me. We, he explained it to me. I said, that sounds awesome. Don't expect me to explain it. So thank you, Tiff. You're you're amazing as always.
Thank you.
So that's it for my report, Madam Chairperson, unless you have questions.
All right. What time is it getting to be? Is someone gonna like time so that we have an o'clock thing?
Yes, sir. I used to be. I'll do that.
Okay, thanks. Going into the chair report, we did, Sue and I did an orientation with the two incoming school committee members. And they're now, they're turned over to the superintendent. They made appointments with the superintendent to meet with them. We followed, we tried to follow policy BIA dash R, which is not a policy. It's a procedure. We tried to follow that procedure. Mr. Superintendent, they still need the building tour and I asked them to ask you for that, but just in case they forget. And I didn't have a chance to really give a basic overview of how the budget process happens at all. So if you'd like to add that to what you want to talk with them, they're all sworn in. They have some paperwork that they still have to turn in that I know Colleen has file folders all ready for them and is putting stuff in and I'll help keep track of that. Just a reminder to all the school committee people, the superintendent evaluations coming up the next meeting. So I sent an email. I hope that you've all received it and had numerous materials in it. So if you can get those going, it also has a date when I would like you to send the last page of that tool to me. So I can just add up the numbers on that rubric part. Please bring with you or or please have that tool available with your recommendations and commendations because we can just combine all those into a summary. And is there anything on that whole, on all of those materials for the superintendent evaluation that you don't understand at this point? If you, if you, the superintendent and I both recognize that there'll be things on that tool that you feel as though you've had no opportunity to observe. And we all get that. And so just put it down. Haven't observed it. Haven't had an opportunity to. Don't know if I ever will. Something like that. Not a big deal. And so I have standing committee reports. Finance committee.
Sue and I have been working quite a bit. We are all caught up, although I do, well, who I don't know because if Amanda's been out, she may not have one, but I do believe there was one that was going to be ready the Friday of Thanksgiving. And that's the only one we have not done yet, but we have, and I did send these to Colleen already, but we have done warrant, general warrant, seven A, eight, nine, 10, 11 and 11A payroll, nine, nine A, nine B, 10 and 10A, and school nutrition, one, two, three and four. And just huge kudos out to everyone dealing with finances right now. Amanda's been great. Where Sue and I really try to meet when she's in there so that we can just pop over and ask a question. And she usually has the right answer every time we go see her. So it's actually been very smooth and she's so well organized doing that. So it's, it's actually been fairly flawless going through. So it's a lot of paperwork, though.
Well, kudos to the two of you. I I know most of us know firsthand the hours that it takes to go through those. So thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Policy committee, I'd like to put off any comments on policy committee. Do we actually get to the policies?
Nothing new at this time.
Thank you. And then the curriculum and the renovation are both ad hoc committees. So they they should be in a little different category, I think.
So I would like to report on the on the renovations.
Yeah, yeah, I was just saying that curriculum and renovation should probably be under a G. That's the, those are ad hoc committees.
Okay.
That's all. So is there anything for curriculum? And Mr. Superintendent?
I only just want to report that I got a report today. This is very much in line with the study that the architectural study that was done last year from Genie Roofing with an estimate of work that they're they're suggesting be done next year. And I, quite frankly, I don't know how it can possibly happen there. They've identified almost half a million dollars worth of roof work at the grade school, high school and middle school. Very little at the middle school, but but still $13,000 worth of work there. And surprisingly, the majority of the work that needs to be done is at the high school. 300,000 of the 473 is at the high school. They're recommending that a roof is is being replaced. I will continue to to take a look at this. And then they identify an additional $105,000 for fiscal year 2022. So those are going to be, those are going to require some additional conversation. I do not see any way possible that we're going to be able to financially put those in or get approval from the state for monies for for those for roofing. Obviously, the money at the high school is is a good investment. But it's still, it's, it's whatever. It's it's a huge amount of money. So I don't have any solutions right now. I'm just, I just was made aware of this today. And I knew it was, I guess I knew it was coming from the study, but I didn't, wasn't aware of what the budget impact was. And just, most of you probably already where I looked through the budget, the current operating budget. And there's no ways near that kind of money that was earmarked for, say, a project this year that we could say carry over into next year and you keep the budget somewhat flat is nothing even remotely close to that. Only the preventative pieces that we have the contract with Genie Roofing for that. So I will tell you that I had begun the the process of I shouldn't even say it's a process. I I've reached out, I've taken some look, some long shots and asked some, some, I don't know, some very remote possibilities of people who have lots and lots of money who are looking for places to spend them to see if this somehow would, they might be able to 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 support us here in Winthrop. And it's not likely to happen, but doesn't hurt to ask. That's it.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Stoneton, here we are again. Starting our winter court season.
I lost my camera today during Zooms. I apologize that you can't see this lovely face. But I I guess I will just start. I I know you guys have to get somewhere by seven. So I'd like to start with kind of just an overview of where we are at. So there's not a huge difference from the fall to the winter sports as far as what we're supposed to do as far as guidelines and sanitation. We receive guidelines from the same groups, the DOE, the MPA, CDC, everybody's on board much more than they were in the fall. What I'd like to share with you is that students will be wearing masks at all time for practice and games. Hopefully, we're starting next Monday, December 7th, which will be skills and drills where the coach is in person. And and what's different about that is just that there's no scrimmage. There's no high intensity drills. You still can condition, but it's kind of a lower key thing just to kind of acclimate kids with their masks. I will share with you that today I was part of a conversation that there's a good chance the state may push back all sporting activities in and out of school until January anyways. I share that with you, not for any other reason, but I want you to be aware that the yo-yo is starting again. I do feel like we're in a better position of what we know is going on, what could happen. We've definitely got a green light much earlier than we had before in the fall. But again, there's a lot of things, as we know, the numbers are going in a different direction that are not helpful. Excuse me. A week after we start the seventh on the December 14th, we're supposed to be able to pick things up a little bit and go to a regular practice. All that simply means is is we can do scrimmages in our pods within the school. Again, though, everybody is wearing masks. Two weeks after that, the state of Maine is supposed to review where things are as far as the numbers of COVID. I don't know if you've been following the news, but there was a huge outbreak today in Nukemus. So schools are starting to be affected by that and they're going to start to weigh that information out. Again, the only reason I share that with you is just that for the weeks we've been hearing how there's nothing to do with schools, there is no spread XYZ. But today they did come out and say that schools are definitely having an impact on the spread of COVID. Because of that, in in I should say previous to that, they already had determined that on January 1st or 2nd, they were going to take some time to review where the numbers were, if there was any spread from in-school sporting programs to AAU and out-school programs and see how the spread of COVID was being affected by that. So I know that's a lot of kind of rambling information, but basically what I'd like you to hear is that we started signups last week on December 7th. We can do some skills and drills for all winter sports. On the 14th, we can kind of pick it up and put it back to a what we would consider a normal situation. However, everybody is going to be wearing masks at all times, which is much different from the fall. All other protocols will be in place that we had to do with in the fall. On the 11th of January, just to review that again, is when we're supposed to be able to start playing other schools. I think most of you have received the information that Mr. Hodgkin and I had sent to you. It's, it's a little bit different how they do the levels. And currently, we are at level one for winter sports. We would like to get to level four or five. A couple of aspects that I'd like to point out to that have an effect, I guess, on and off the court. Not the Mountain Valley Conference, but the state of Maine in the MPA has declared that there will not be spectators permitted at all for any sports activities. What that means is for us is that parents will not be allowed in the building to pick up their kids for practices, pick up their kids from games or to watch those situations. So everything will basically still be locked down. One thing that I'm happy to finally be able to report to you is that at the high school that the the cameras are now up and running. So we will have the opportunity for folks to be able to at least watch the games that are at home, which will be quite different. And that's a very long conversation of some of the things that we're setting up. To clarify what a cohort is, as far as how kids interact in practice, you're not allowed to have more than 30 in a pod. So what does that mean? Means that if you have a kid that's a swinger that plays JV and varsity, that they will have to determine during the week which one they're going to be for a game to practice with. So if you practice all week as a JV person, you will not be able to swing up during a game for varsity because you are not part of that pod. What the, what the thought process is is that you can have, you're trying to restrict to any sort of spread through the pods. I I hope that makes sense, but it's, it's if you, if you, if you practice with JV and then all of a sudden you bring that germ, I guess, for the lack of a better term, to a varsity game, it could spread quicker. At this point, they're using what's called the three-quarter rule for all of the winter sports. So for example, there's usually 18 games for basketball. Right now, we have set up 12. I've spent a lot of time creating a schedule for the Mountain Valley Conference with statewide groups so that we could be part of a pod for Kennebent County as well as adjacent counties. And I will tell you that it's, it's been interesting because you can certainly come up with dates to play certain, certain schools of equal competitiveness, but it doesn't always work out if they're not the same county. And I guess the 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 one last thing that I think is going to really impact how the public sees things is, you know, we're going to have to take time in between games and practices to allow for air exchange. We are very fortunate that we have a newer school, at least at the high school and middle school, where we can allow for air exchange for 15 minutes and we'll be in a good place. However, there's also going to be all kinds of sanitation that happens in between to make sure that there's no exchange of COVID germs. That's a really, really wide 30,000-foot view to give it to you. But, you know, I, I, I do feel very confident that the groups that I've had to work with this year, not just myself, but any AD in the state of Maine, but I I think they're more on top of this and have a better hold of it than we did in the fall. Some of the things that, you know, just, just to throw out there, kids have to show up in uniform. Rooms are not allowed to be used. Officials have to show up in uniform. Changing rooms are not to be used. There's a lot of things that we can do to protect our school integrity. But I will be honest with you that it does not still align with what we do during the day. And I don't think that's good, bad or indifferent. I just want to be very transparent with you, the parents and the kids is we don't allow people in our building during the day that are not part of the pod that we've now created, for example, in the high school of 200-plus kids and staff members. But we will now be inviting between 25 and 30 other folks to come into our school after school when there's less restrictions and sanitation set up. So I hope that kind of gives you enough of a general view as far as where things are at.
Dyke?
Just a couple of questions. Since masks have to be worn by everyone, kids and obviously referees and basketball is a pretty high impact and heavy breathing sport. Has there been any talk about? Or is there any, any purchase of some of the, and I don't know what's good, bad or indifferent, but some of the athletic type masks that are supposed to be better for breathing? Or is it just any mask that any kid wants to wear?
At this point, it's any mask that any kid wants to wear and it's more of like a choice of what works for them. I guess where I go with that is that I had, the other night I had dinner with Jeff Benson, who's I, I guess where I'd go with that is that I had, the other night I had dinner with Jeff Benson, who's the uh, head official for the state of Maine. And he was, we were having a conversation about how does this work out to be enforced? And the officials are going to take that on as far as having masks be in place at all times. If something gets ripped down, they will stop the game after a certain amount of time. Um, but as far as what is considered the best mask or not, Jana, there's, there's really-
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that, but I didn't know that they're coming out with a lot more athletic type masks. And I don't know really, I mean, I'm obviously not playing sports, so.
Yep.
I didn't know if there was just any discussion even amongst, even it, within our old Winthrop School about possibly purchasing some of those for athletes or, or having some on hand because you know, who knows what's going to happen if, you know, someone's going to get their mask ripped off and broken four or five times during a game and are we going to have those extra ones on hand?
Yes. Yeah, I can tell you definitely even part of our protocol this fall is that we, we had extra masks that were on hand. They may not be what the kid would like to have or was wearing, but it's certainly there to, to protect them. So you know, one of the biggest issues we're dealing with is, is, is trying to figure out how to space everything out. Um, on, on the sidelines, they're supposed to be six feet apart. They're supposed to be six feet apart from their coach. I mean, you're, you're talking a lot of space quite quickly. Um, you know, and I know that's not quite along the conversation of the mask, but uh, I can tell you some schools, Booth Bay, for example, they, they made a decision that they're going to have to change their masks every quarter, every fifteen minutes during practices. They're making their kids wear goggles. Um, but there's other schools within the conference that, you know, we met with today and they were having conversations about simply, you know, just whatever is available to the child is what it's going to be. So um, once again, it's just not a really black and white area.
Um, and I just have, I think, two more questions too.
Sure, absolutely.
Are, are all of our coaches on board so far, or are we not that far yet?
Yes, we are. Yep, I met with the coaches yesterday. Uh, everybody's on board. Uh, they know the protocols. There's actually a COVID training that they have to take to be certified uh, to, to uh, coach. And uh, yeah, they're, they're all on board and I think, as I think I shared with you in the fall, one of the things I needed to do better was set a bar. Uh, so everybody knew what that was going to be as a coaching staff as well as the kids. And um, I think by doing that and, and, and talking with them and working with them, that everybody's on board and, and ready to do what's being asked of them.
Awesome. And then my last question, I don't really even know if it's a question, but I do find it kind of odd, the swinger things, and I know that's not up to, to Winthrop. But um, you know, if you've got, I mean, for us, that kid could, you know, that's playing on JV and/or varsity could be sitting in English class.
Right.
With the basketball team members for both teams. So I just find that a kind of an odd rule or an odd.
I agree, and I think um, you know, when we talked yesterday as coaches and you know, we, there's certainly things we can do around that uh, to make sure that, you know, they're part of both pods. Um, it is, it is very frustrating because it's, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, once again, we'll keep these kids apart on the sidelines, but then they can go out there and run around and be six inches from one another. So.
Right.
Um, but yeah, we're, we're certainly trying to be conscious of those things to, to reduce the spread. Um, however, it's one of those things that uh, just doesn't make a lot of sense.
And thank you for all your work on this too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I have two quick questions for you, Joel. Um, number one, it sounded like that uh, that the sports are going to be available to the middle school as well as high school?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, um, you mentioned that you had signups. What was the interest like?
Um, once things got kind of sorted out, uh, putting it out to the public, I had to keep it so you had to use your school address. And so a lot of the middle school parents didn't quite understand that they couldn't use their own to sign up for their, for their child. Um, so we're up over forty in the middle school and we're about fifty in the high school.
Wow.
So we will have to, we will certainly have to, um, to be honest with you, we'll have to look at cuts at the middle school level that we haven't had to in the past simply because of the amount of people that can be in the gym area. So for example, at the high school today, we decided uh, as a conference that twenty-five folks could be part of a visiting team. Uh, which means you can, you can bring three coaches and twenty-two players or you can, you know, however you make your program work, um, which is what will filter down to the middle school.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Shumway?
Um, Joel, you had mentioned um, that in between practices that there would be a, a gap of time for air exchange and for cleaning.
Yep.
Do you have a plan yet for who would be responsible for that cleaning in between those practices?
Yes. So basically the way we see it is uh, for practices, um, practices and games will be a little bit different, but there'll be, if, when everybody will leave the gym and the fifteen minutes will start and the coaches will be responsible for sterilizing the, the basketballs that just got used or um, what, one thing that I've asked the coaches to do is design an area for each kid to leave their equipment or go to to drink water during practices. Um, the, I, I've asked them to come up with a catchphrase, some, you know, ramblers, which means go to your spot, your X. Um, as we all learned in kindergarten, um, you know, something like that. But so, yes, so uh, what I'm trying to get at is the coaches will be responsible for that as the air exchange happens when everybody is, is not there. Uh, I, I think a big thing that's going to be hard for kids, uh, and I'm not going to, you know, again, to be transparent, I'm very worried at the middle school is that kids are going to have to figure out um, the days of staying after school for practice are gone. Uh, you're going to have to be out of that area, um, taking it a step further. Uh, when you think about hosting a game, for example, when you have a varsity team and a JV team, you, you have to accommodate for the visiting team to be there for two teams simply because of transportation, which means uh, if you're playing a JV game, the varsity team can't be in the building uh, or that area. And then after the JV game is over, they're going to have to leave and the varsity comes in. So that's going to be, I think, a lot more difficult at the middle school because those games start at three-thirty. Um, and so when you were starting to talk about bringing in the A-team or the varsity team at the middle school, uh, you're talking about parents that are, have work schedules and, and those types of things, if that makes sense. So uh, so to, to get back to your, your original question, Kristin, yeah, we, we are going to have coaches take care of that uh, stuff during practices. Uh, I met with FMS today and we've worked out a system that they'll come in um, after the first game and clean everything up uh, and then do the same thing after the second game.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions from the school committee? Joel, the amount of detail that you have had to deal with and have dealt with is absolutely amazing.
I, I appreciate that. And I just, again, for the point of being transparent, I am extremely nervous to be responsible for everybody's safety. Uh, it's much different indoors than it is outdoors. Uh, and I'm just putting that on record because I, I, I am concerned that you, we can do the best that we can uh, with the resources that we have. And it doesn't matter how many resources, in my opinion. I, I don't think that we can guarantee people's safety of not passing anything if someone has it. Um, such is the point in Nukemus today.
I, I know, I know exactly what you're saying and I'm not, I'm not negating what you're saying that
Sure.
that, the fact that that you feel responsible and you don't, that you can take on the responsibility of keeping everybody safe. Um, well, I didn't express that correctly, but I would, I would take some exception to that is that there's a whole bunch of folks uh, including our students and our parents that do have some responsibility for helping out in this situation and it's, it doesn't all rest on you. So.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. And, and just so to, to follow up on that comment a little bit too, Jenny, is that there is a form on family ID um, where you do sign off and understand that there's an inherent risk uh, that you may present yourself to possibly having COVID interactions. So um, it is what it is. And you know, I think in the, the day and age that it's kind of flipped a little bit from the fall where the school is certainly uh, providing more things than the why, just because at this point, we're not allowing the why in our building. So uh, I think it's, it's the best that it can be. But thank you for that. I really do appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Thanks so much, Mr. Stonehenge.
You're welcome. And I will definitely keep you guys in the loop as I get more uh, information.
So madam chairperson, uh, our guest has arrived.
Oh, right. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Where is that motion? Uh, go into executive session for a consultation between the school unit and school attorney pursuant to MRS A four oh five six E.
So moved.
Dykett?
Um, I'll take the, I'll call the roll, Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski? Yes. Uh, Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes. Nice job.
And I'm yes as well. Uh, we're going into executive session, unanimous vote on the motion. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, it's, I guess, or, or, or Mr. Delisle, who's it up to to put us into our room?
That would be Mr. Delisle.
Okay. Do we have any?
That there is likely to be a vote when we come back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely. I know better. And for everybody that's on, before you start blinking off, there's likely to be a vote regarding the topic uh, of our executive session. And we still have a whole bunch of other stuff on our agenda. Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Delisle?
You need to make me a host. I can't do it unless you change me to host.
Oh, you can't be the co-host?
No, I can't make a breakout room unless you're the host. So there, there's the two options.
You are now the host.
Bear with me as it'll take me a minute.
You have any instructions for us, Mr. Delisle?
I do not. You shouldn't have to do anything. I just have to manually select one by one. So I just got to bear with me.
So Mike, while you're doing that multitask, um, when we are done executive session, how do we return to regular session?
I think you can just leave the breakout room if I remember correctly. We've, we've only done it one, one time this way.
Okay. We'll try it. So while we're all still here, I can just report to you, I just texted uh, Mr. Stonehenge and said that we, we still have some PPE money left to spend from the COVID relief funds. So I told him to order a bunch of those masks. Those are, those, I was not aware of that. So.
Yeah, and I don't know. I mean, I don't, I, I think there's a couple of different brands out and like, you know, it is, masks are different for different people. So I just didn't know if there would have been any, you know, if, if anyone has really even tried any or anything like that, but.
Yeah, I'm going to join the breakout room now. Sorry, Jan.
That's fine.
We have, we have Joe.
We're all here.
I thought we brought everybody with us. That's pretty doggone good. Is Ms. McCormick with us?
Not yet. Oh, yeah.
Okay, folks, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to grant the superintendent of schools the authority to enter into in accordance with the terms discussed in the executive session, a non-monetary agreement relating to a state administrative complaint.
I second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms.?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
You muted, Joe.
I was going to say that's because you couldn't believe what I said. Yes.
Was that a yes, Mr. Petrowski?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
This guy makes it unanimous. Very much. Thank you, Ms. McCormick.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Nice to see you. Have a nice evening.
You too. Well, we'll be here for another two hours.
Then we won't.
Janice, please. Anna, we have nine, um,
All right, maybe if I don't go to bed till eleven, I won't be up at four and three and two.
Yeah, Jen and I were, we're up together at three o'clock this morning.
Were you texting one another?
No.
None. It wasn't intentional.
The worst part about it is that yours truly at that hour was going out and putting more gasoline in the chair.
Oh, no. That's not good.
I got power back though. This is really neat. Uh, we're using my uh, phone as a hotspot. I'm quite pleased to know that this can be done. So we have power, we don't have the internet.
Hmm.
Cool. Okay, folks. We do have nine policies. I hope to suggest and that you agree that we table the last one. So that brings us down to eight. But um, if you'll turn your attentions now to policy EBCA, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the revisions to policy EBCA, emergency management plan.
So moved.
Thank you. And seconded. And seconded. And discussion, just before there's discussion, I just want to say that for all of the policies um, that is up in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see where it says exhibit. So that will all say policy instead of exhibit. And for all of the policies, wherever they've said uh, Winthrop School Board, that's all been changed to School Committee. Um, in addition, we have a change. In addition, we have a change to uh, the third paragraph in EBCA. Or do we? Okay, as, as required by law, the school committee will approve the plan annually at the first August meeting is in addition. Tighten that up a bit.
Are you treating as, as an amendment we have to pass?
Um, it's a suggested revision.
I'll move that uh, we amend the policy to add the new revision.
Dykett? That's, wait, but that's how the motion originally was written. Move to adopt the revisions to policy EBCA.
Okay.
So I don't think we need a, I don't think, yeah.
So you've done it.
Even though, even though it's not written down there. Currently. So I feel like it's an additional or no?
There weren't any revisions on the copy that we were given. The policy committee made revisions and now we're discussing them. So I think we're covered.
We're okay?
Yep.
We're okay with the process? Okay. So that's, that's all I think I had. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm back on.
Excuse me? Uh, Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Did somebody say something? Did somebody say something to me?
I I said something, Jenny. I'm sorry. I should have muted myself. I'm having, I just kind of, I lost you guys. I had to switch networks and so I I I need to mute myself.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I as well, motion passes unanimously. Let's take a look at policy G C O A. And please remind me, the public is allowed to comment ahead of time on this. So, um, if the public would like to type in any comments to help inform the, the school committee on how they should vote on these policies, please type them in on my chat. I'm just reading a comment here at six fifty. Oh, okay. From Ms. Chris. Can everybody read that? Can see that comment? Ms. Chris says, I would also like to state for the record that I am not in favor of any sports in the middle school. So just going back to the sports presentation by, um, Mr. Stone. Okay, so back to policy G C O A, um, staff evaluation. If anyone would like to make a comment in the public, now's the time to write or type your comment in. I also would like to say to all the school committee people that, um, people have had an opportunity via our, our website to make comments on these, on most of these policies. And there have been no new comments on any of the policies that that were put up on the website as of last night. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the revisions to policy G C O A, staff evaluation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And let's see if we made any changes there. So, um, the only change that we've made there, and it's already written because this is for final reading, so that we made last time was that, um, the last sentence of the second paragraph has changed the number of years from three to two to comply with the M D O E changes for probationary teachers from three to two years. And that is written there because we made that change last time. That's the only change here. Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, and this may not fall under this. Is this just for teaching staff? Because it's Marzano and all of that. I I only ask is it, is it different for coaches or things like that? Okay.
Who who answered that?
Jim, I saw Jim shaking his head. Yes. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further discussion? Questions? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Unanimously passes. We will now go to, I have to keep my pages straight. We will now go to I A A, right? Oh, no. Yes.
Yes.
I A A. The only change here was school board to school committee. So we, as a policy committee, had no suggested changes on this policy. I'll entertain a motion to accept policy. What's what's the official here? Motion to adopt the revisions to policy I A A service learning.
So moved.
I was gonna let you.
I keep thinking that Sue's gonna do these because it's her committee. So I keep kind of waiting for Sue to chime in.
Well, you guys usually do it, so I just defer to you all.
Okay. Let me have my name in the minutes one last time.
You're all, you can, you can start them, Krista. I'll second it, Jenny.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I think it's been made and seconded. I'm not exactly.
By both of us. Twice.
Okay, very good. Um, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Yeah. New business. So these are for first reading. I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy I K F, graduation requirements.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. It's also public's opportunity to type in on this one to to help inform the school committee's vote. Graduation requirements have have a few changes. Ready? Um, in the, well, it's either the second or the third paragraph. Um, it starts off with the state requirements. So we've, we've stricken or deleted the word serving. So the state requirements for awarding a diploma that serve as minimum requirements. It's just a typo kind of a correction. Um, after reading the whole policy, it was determined that that third sentence that was just thrown in there doesn't really need to be there. So we're suggesting that we delete students graduating in the classes of twenty twenty and beyond must meet the credit and other graduation requirements specified in this policy. And then moving on down to Roman numeral one, number four, science, three point five credits, including at least one year of adding the word a laboratory, changing the word study to science. Is that okay?
Yes.
Um, number eight, under Roman numeral one. We recommend the deletion of everything after half a credit. Uh, so we're deleting and revision, uh, April eighth, twenty twenty to suspend all requirements for community service for the school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty for the class of twenty twenty, class of twenty twenty one, and so on. Um, setting their graduation requirement to be forty five years. We're gonna address that in a little.
Hours.
Motion a little later on. And the reason for that is that we we all, uh, thought that that's a temporary kind of a thing put into a permanent policy. And, um, we didn't need to put a temporary solution into a permanent policy, but we still do need to address that. And we are scheduled to address that.
I do have one question on this, Jenny.
Yes.
It it may just be a typo. If you go up to uh, paragraph three again, where it says the state requirements, the one that you you were talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
The last sentence is fine arts, which may include art, music, forensic, forensics, or drama for one year. But then when you go down to number five, with fine arts listed out, forensics is not in there. Should it be?
I don't see any harm in it.
I had no idea forensics was considered a fine art.
Neither do I. Probably the fine, the teachers that have Zen F A or whatever they call that degree don't think it is either, but I don't even want to go there.
I just think if it's in one of them, it might want to be in the other one.
Yep. Do you see any problem with that, Superintendent Hodgkin?
I I don't. Um, the, but if you're gonna be consistent there, it says in in five, it says theater or drama. Um, so we should make sure we're consistent. Forensics or theater?
Oh, I didn't even see that theater wasn't there. You're right, Jim. Yep.
Yep. So it should just should be consistent.
Okay, so we'll add theater up at the the second or third paragraph. And we'll add forensics to number five.
Perfect.
Okay, um, Mr. Deanda Whaley, did you have a question, comment?
I mean, sort of, but not really. I was just, um, I was, I was seeing how, um, on the sciences, it kind of says labor, laboratory of study or the study or whatnot, um, or science. And I know sometime, I know Ms. Doucette, who runs the forensic thing, I mean, it kind of just gets into what we label forensics. But I just, I knew that they do kind of like, that's kind of more like a lab-ish, half-year credit type thing. So that's kind of what I, that's just kind of what I was thinking. I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to complicate like anything at all. But I just know that that's maybe like another way that, I don't know, students might think that they were getting a, uh, a science grade. But I mean, I guess they weren't, or something. But, um, I know that's just like one of the things that was kind of like, uh, oh, I guess I'm hearing it's a art. Um, forensics is an art. Oh, Mr. Campbell just direct messaged me. Okay. Well, I mean, that doesn't matter. I think that was just my misinformation. I thought it was a science.
Me too, Josh.
Me too. So we're all in agreement, including Mr. Campbell, that forensics apparently is a fine art. We're all good with that, everybody?
Yes.
All right. On the next page then, so we've gotten. So if you go, continue on down, you see alternative methods of earning credits, A, B, C, D, E, and then that statement after E, students may pursue, so we've, we've, um, deleted also an opt and two. So students may pursue a high school diploma through multiple additional pathways. If you continue on down, you'll see in bold, uh, students receiving special education services. All of that's going to be deleted, uh, because it's already, it it's just repetitious. It's already been pretty much written. So, uh, alternative methods of of earning credits in that spot are all going to be deleted because it's repetitious. All the way, you know, B, C, D, and E. So then we get to informing paper together here. Then we get to informing students and parents. There's nothing there. If you go to the next page and it says on, on D, Sue can probably explain better than I can her question there. Go ahead.
So my, my question was with, um, if you have, say, a junior that's going to be graduating early with the senior class, um, how does that affect determining, uh, valedictorian and so on and so forth? It's not addressed. I was just wondering how that works. And Jim said he was gonna look into that more.
So if we can't, well, so that either I assume then that, um, in January, there'll be a suggestion of how that that should be dealt with. Is that good, Mr. Superintendent? Yep, okay. So that that question still has to be answered. But the question is, can you, for first reading, accept policy I K F with the revisions that we've suggested so far?
Yeah, I just want to be clarified that I think the question, the answer to Sue's question is not a matter of this policy.
Oh. Although standing is mentioned in another place in this policy. Should they both be removed?
Uh, that's something, sort of the answer is between what you just said and what I just said. It's take a look at what the resolution is and then we'll, uh, we'll go from there.
So this policy needs some more work, but can, I guess the question is, can you accept it for first reading as far as it's gotten? Any, any further comments? Seeing none, and I don't see any others here. Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Now, we're going to go to, um, page sixteen, policy J E C B A, admission of foreign students. So I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy J E C B A, admission of foreign students.
So moved. Second.
Um, okay, I have to find it in my, in my paperwork here first. The only change that we should, we threw out there, it might not be a change. If you go down to the second paragraph, um, the question was raised, um, is that form, the visa or form I twenty issued by the U S Department of Justice and Immigration, is that still a current form number? We're gonna update this. This hasn't been updated since two thousand and two, and the superintendent said that he would look into it. So the question is, are you willing to, after discussion, to accept it with the knowledge that the superintendent will be coming back to you in January with a thumbs up or suggested change in the verbiage? Any additional discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
He's unavailable at the moment.
Uh, Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I had a look at my. Mr. Petrowski, would you like to vote on policy J E C B A?
Yes, I would. Thank you. The answer is yes.
Motion passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy B D D, school committee superintendent relationship.
So moved.
Second.
Public comment. Now it's time to put it in there. And let me get my D D D. Yes. The, um, the policy committee had no suggested changes.
Awesome.
Great. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
This guy, yes, as well. Motion passes unanimously. Check that one off. We're getting down that page. G B E B. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy G B E B, staff conduct with students.
So moved. Second.
And, uh, for the public, now's your time. Do we have any public? Should I keep saying that? Yes. For the public, now's your time to type in anything that you would like to help us and inform our vote, that would help us inform our vote. So for anything, the policy committee on GBEB. I don't see any changes, Sue.
The only question we had was on number nine under letter A, is social networking sites inclusive enough nowadays with, with all the different platforms that there are?
I think the superintendent was okay with checking that out with the A team.
Right.
Right?
Actually, I was going to check it out with Charlotte Bates.
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you.
I have a question on that one, actually, on number nine.
Yes.
As we all know, social media has changed considerably. And there are, um, teachers that have students on Snapchat and things like that. Do we have an outline of what, and I'm sort of going down through there, of what is? I'm assuming things like TikTok and things like Snapchat are not really part of approved curriculum related activity. And I don't mean that to be joking. I just, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't know. Sometimes, I mean, Facebook as well, but it's a means of communication for a lot of things. And I know that there is a line that students and teachers shouldn't in whatever cross. But the reality is, if, I don't know. The reality is those teachers and staff members that are on some of these social media devices with students, and some of it is used for academic things or sports related things or club related things, just because it's easier to push that stuff out that way.
So you're suggesting that there, that perhaps we ought to come up with some examples of acceptable sites, social networking sites that teachers can use?
Possibly, or just maybe even rewording that. I mean, and again, the, it's really hard because I, I can't imagine when I was a kid necessarily communicating with some of my teachers like that when I was a kid. Now, as a teacher, I can imagine communicating with some students that way. So I don't know what the answer or what the solution or how it should be written. I know like in my school, and I don't know if it's a policy or not, but it's, it's highly suggested that we cannot be Facebook friends with students until they're out of high school. And, and we don't even have, like, we're a middle school and lower. So it's not even like it's a high school teacher with a high school student. So I, I just don't, I don't want to get us in the weeds, but I also don't want to. Yeah, and Jim might answer that.
Actually, it's what I saw. I, I kind of oversimplified my answer, but the reason, what I had said was I'm going to contact Charlotte Bates because I think there's probably been a fair amount of, of language. And exactly what you just articulated, Jan, is what I'm, what I'm thinking about, that there's probably language that means school management has drafted around those issues. And I want to, I want to talk to her and see what else, what clarifying language there is.
Awesome.
Um, just to, just if you're going to be talking with the A team as well, just another thought. And Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that the, some of the teams use Snapchat to communicate, but the coaches aren't involved in those Snapchats, that they communicate with the captain. And then the captain relays the information on that social media site. Josh, is that correct, how it worked for soccer?
Yes, correct.
Awesome.
So.
A lot of that right there, Kristen.
Right. And so that might just be, that just might be the line that we want to draw and saying, so that we don't get into that, you know, crossing the line is that if there's going to be a social media site used for communication that, you know, that the, the captain heads that. With that being said, last year with basketball, there was an issue with some of the things that were said in that chat. It was addressed and handled by the coach. The coach wasn't a part of it, but, so I don't, so again, that's just another thing I would talk with the A team about is how to kind of set a precedent for parameters around using things like that.
Sounds like a slippery one. Okay, so with the changes, with, there's no changes here, but you do know that the superintendent's going to come back to you in January with some thoughts from Charlotte Bates from MSMA about that. And I think that'll probably start a little bit more discussion from you folks, but do you feel okay with the way it is now to vote it in for first reading? Any further discussion?
I just have one, sorry, I'm just looking through this again. Um, down on page 19, which is page two of this, I believe. Um, number three, inviting or allowing students to visit the staff members' home. And I don't think this necessarily happens at coaches or staff members' homes, but I know a lot of teams do team dinners. And I know it also says unless the student's parents approves of the activity. So that might, you know, be fine with that. But again, things have changed and these teams, you know, there's a, there's a, a whole culture around some of these teams and coaches are very much a part of that and club, you know, drama club teachers, or I don't, I hate referring just to sports on that. But I, I want to make sure that that is okay because things like that I think are important to build things with teams as well. So maybe just some clarifying things there.
So, Mr. Superintendent, could you get Charlotte's take on number three as well, please?
Will you?
Thank you.
Um, I just had a quick comment. I think, I think at the top before it reads those lists, it says, staff members will inform their building principal or supervisor as needed. So I don't know if that's like maybe a way that we can incorporate that, like, like if the coach is like part of the building, and I guess a teacher, since we do have some of those, like they just inform the principal, that would make it kind of okay, because I think we have created that kind of culture and community where like, I mean, we're small and we have like the team dinners and they're always super fun. Not this year, unfortunately.
Uh, yeah.
But yeah, but I feel like that, that's pretty, I don't know.
Good point, Josh. Thank you.
Good job, Josh. Okay, we, we sat? Here we go. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
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 Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I as well. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we're getting there. These see folks. Okay, starts on page 20. I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the revisions to policy ADC, smoking tobacco use.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, and the policy committee suggests. Okay. So first off, just as an aside, if you look under definitions. Second. First, first, first sentence, the word biddy. Who's going to tell us besides Sue? And the superintendent, no fair, what the word biddy means?
Prophecy tobacco is defined to include any of that.
I don't see anybody, Sue, here stepping right up to figure out, to, to tell us what that is. So I don't feel so old anymore.
I didn't know what it was either. I had to Google it.
Hey, Josh, Mr. Deanda Whaley.
Sue does. Sue has it.
Ah, you the one? No. Okay, so tell us what biddy is, please.
A type of cheap cigarette made of unprocessed tobacco wrapped in leaves.
Yeah. All right. Are the policy committee changes to ADC recommendations? We're going to take the last sentence. Literally, the last sentence in this policy. Says, all of these same pro, prohibitions shall apply to electronic cigarettes and other devices designed to deliver nicotine through inhalation or vaping or used to stimulate smoking. And we're going to take that statement and add it to, under definitions, add it to the last statement under definitions.
Is that so it covers all the new vaping stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I assume that back in, back in 2016, I, I know this to be true, that they were having trouble with vaping. And I assume that it wasn't in the current policy and they quickly just got it in there. I shouldn't say they, it was probably me too. And, 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 and got it in there just to get it in there, but I'm not certain that it was put in, in the best place. So we chose to put it in under definitions. Okay? All right. Under Roman numeral four. Line four, the sentence that says, "An effort and add three words will be made to provide positive alternatives." So it should read now, "An effort will be made to provide positive alternatives." Um, generally speaking, I just these notes along the side of my page here, generally speaking, we all brought up that, there's, there's quite a lot that's being asked, and this goes on also in another section of the same policy. There's quite a lot that's being asked of the school system and its personnel. We're not sure that we think it's great if we can do it. So it's, it's a matter of making sure it gets done as we get here later on. Is it too cumbersome? Is it really asking too much? Is it practical? Is it realistic? And the superintendent, I think this is the one you agreed to take to the A team, right?
And that's correct.
Yeah, and, and have a chat and see if it's really practical that we try to offer all of these things to, to folks. Okay, communication to students and staff. I don't think we had anything there. Um, Roman numeral six, the same comments then for B, C, and D, and for number two, D, and E. Now, do we want to do it? Is it the stuff to do? You know, for C, do we have a cessation program? Is it, is it practical to ask our people to offer a cessation program? I think, I think as the policy was written, it's great if we can offer all of those things to students and staff. Does it even involve staff being offered some of those opportunities? That's all I think we had. Sue, Sue, how am I doing?
Great.
Okay. Okay, so that's all I have. Any, any further discussion from folks? About policy eight. Oh, now wait a minute. Oh. If Shaw wanted to tell us what a BD was, only we spell it in our, in our, in our policy, B I D I. Oh. Well, we have a, we have a little discrepancy here from Ms. Shaw about the spelling of BD or biddy. I know that she found biddy when she Googled it, so.
It did say both when I looked it up.
Yeah.
It said BD.
It's both. BD is both. BD, AKA biddy. Yes, yes. Ms., says question here.
The state of Maine offers a smoking cessation course. Could you adjust that to just say that the staff would provide that information?
It, it certainly could be if that's what folks want to do.
That's all.
I think that the superintendent's going to take this to the admins, and I think that they can adjust it from there, what, what they think they can do.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, I feel like I'm being asked to do two things. One, to see if we are indeed doing this. If so, where? And, and whatever. So it may be that we just changed the wording to, to something like what you just suggested. But I think the first question that I wasn't prepared to answer, at least tonight, was whether or not this is even happening at all.
Thank you. All right, are you prepared to, are there any more thoughts? Ready to vote? Here we go. I'll call the roll. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
I as well. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, there's only seven more of these to go. Um.
Stop it. Is it really?
No, no. Ten, and I hope to table, we hope to table the last one. I mean, it's only a total of nine. We hope to table the last one. So, but, um, so page 23 was CBI. So, um, motion to, so the policy evaluation of the superintendent.
We did say we were tabled this one.
Right. So I, do we have to have a motion first, Mr. Superintendent, before we decide to table it though? That's why.
I think you as the, as the chair can suggest that we table it because the committee hasn't weighed in.
Right. So on this evaluation of the superintendent, this particular policy is, it seemed as far as the, as far as the policy committee is concerned, is fairly good. It needs some changes. Some of the months need to be changed, but in the policy book, there's also a CBI dash R, a procedure. And several years ago, we were trying to get all of these things put together, and then we had some unfortunate crises that we had to take care of. And so we're, we're trying to get this policy put back together again and actually utilize it at the next meeting. So the dates don't mesh well between CBI and CBI dash R. So what we would like to do is for you folks to be okay with us tabling it. And then someone, I don't know who yet. See that, are you grinning, Mr. Superintendent? Are you grinning? Someone, I don't know who yet, then just needs to make all of this work. Like a cog, you see, you see, Mr. Superintendent, you see my?
I do.
So, so I don't know who will do that, but I, I'm certainly am hoping that the superintendent will be willing to do that.
All over.
Okay, thank you. So I, I'd like to table. Is everybody okay? I don't know that I need to vote for this, but can I have some sort of consensus?
Yes.
Table it.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So this policy, policy CBI is being tabled. The next presentation of CBI, I think, should probably include CBI R. Yes?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so this policy is officially tabled. Thank you. And now we'll move to G. Thank you, and now we'll move to G, under new business, motion to suspend. So this is where I told you we were going to come back to, um, community service. Motion to suspend all requirements for community service for the class of 2021. Um, so let's, I'll entertain that motion, please.
I moved, I moved to suspend all requirements for community service for the class of 2021.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. That we suspend all requirements for community service, uh, for the class of 2021. So this will be the second year, because we suspended for last spring, we suspended the requirement for community service. It's, this'll start to get a little murky here for us, so this'll be the second year. Now, you have to understand that when they complete four years of community service, that's a total of sixty hours, fifteen a year, they're awarded a half a credit. Um, what happens if we have some folks who have gone ahead and followed the schedule for community service, and when they're about to graduate, the class of 2021, have their first two years and have thirty hours of community service in?
Well, I, I think that's what we talked about, that those ones, I think there's still an expectation for the class of 2021, that there is, um, they will have got thirty. This is last year's suspension and this year's suspension, suspended fifteen years for last year, and fifteen years for this year. Um, and so they, I'm sorry, hours. And, um, so there should be an expectation that Mr. Campbell has, has turned on his, his video, but my sense would be that there would be an expectation that those, in order for students to, to get that half credit, they will have to have documented thirty hours of community service at this point, and if they've made it to this senior year, and they only have ten community service hours, then they do not get their half credit unless they come up with a total of thirty. That would be my understanding. Mr. Campbell, do you want to weigh in? You're muted.
Yep, I agree with, uh, the superintendent's position, the way the policy reads. If, and if this motion passes, if a student has thirty or more hours, and the vast majority of our seniors have thirty or more hours, they would be awarded the half credit.
Thank you, and further discussion?
I would just wonder if Rush has his in yet.
Okay, Mr.-
No, she can come volunteer in my classroom. I'll put you to work. Um, my only, my only question is, it says all requirements.
Right.
Not just for the years nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one. It says all requirements, so if I were a parent, and my senior only had ten, and you're requiring them to have thirty, that's not what that policy says.
What a good catch that is, Ms. Dykett.
Yes, that's-
Coming in my late hour.
I agree with Janet's interpretation.
Yeah, how about we add, after all, community service? No, that, how about we get rid of all then?
If you get rid of community service?
Move to suspend requirements for community service.
For the years nineteen, twenty, and then twenty twenty-one for the class of twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
And so then you would, so let's say you didn't have your whatever, and you wanted to get those credits or needed to get those credits, you still well, can and should get those credits in order to receive them.
Okay, to see if I, see if I have this. Move to suspend requirements for community service for the class of twenty twenty-one for the years nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty-one.
And I don't know if you need to put a, so that they have a total of thirty hours? Because if they gain all their community service hours their freshman year, does that carry them through?
Does it? I have thought only fifteen counted a year.
Okay, and I don't, I don't know.
Is that true, Mr. Campbell?
So what Janet just said is correct, and last year anyway, um, because of the situation we were in, we allowed students, as long as they had their forty-five hours, they were given the half credit. It didn't, we, I didn't separate out fifteen for freshman year, fifteen for sophomore, fifteen for junior, it was just a total of forty-five.
But is that going to be carried over?
Um.
Cause I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking of Tyler's situation, like he, you know, you get all your volunteer hours if you play a sport, like really easily, because you help with the Y program. So he did so many hours last year, but he thought only fifteen counted, so he ended up not submitting his paperwork for half of them, which is his fault, but I was just curious if that's something that's go, if, if the requirement is to do community service every year, then would that become a standard? Last year was a unique situation, but would that become a standard?
So I think the whole idea of the community service hours need to be revisited, because um, there's been questions, it's not really clearly stated up to high school exactly what does and doesn't qualify as service hours. Um, you know, and we did do some, um, creative um, thinking last year with Dr. Brown to make sure that students, um, were not awarded diplomas because of community service, so um, I probably would do the same thing with Mr. Hodgkins, talk to him if I had some students in a tight situation, um, because I really do not think we should be putting them out there or asking them to go out and put themselves in a position where, um, they could potentially pick up COVID, so. Did I answer your question? I agree, okay.
Russia says, you end up, I'm anxious to hear what he has to say.
Oh, my hand was just up because I have like the same question as Jana, because we were talking about the hours, and like, I know, like, people, sometimes their freshman year, um, they can get like more hours than yours, like, I mean, the, I guess, uh, than you're supposed, than the fifteen. Um, and so I, I was going to roll over, I thought I'd heard that it usually doesn't roll over, or like, that's, um, what I had heard, like my freshman years, but like, I mean, if it, just to adapt to the situation, that just kind of sounds fine, I kind of agree.
Well, can I just suggest that we, we look at this issue? Um, but it, I don't think it necessarily pertains to this motion, this is about, what we're really trying to decide here is that, um, in order for the, the students to graduate this year in twenty twenty-one, they will have accumulated thirty hours of community service. Um, what I'm suggesting is that if they only have twenty, um, and they don't find a way to get ten, that they don't get that half credit.
Which I will tell you, Mr. Hodgkins, that's exactly what, um, Dr. Brown said last some, uh, last spring. Those students who didn't have forty-five, um, did not get the half credit, unfortunately, didn't need the half credit to get to twenty-three.
The, uh, the only per, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, do we need to amend our motion?
Um, I think so. Will you work on that amendment for me, please, Ms. Shumway?
Oh, gosh.
Amend it different than what we just amended it to?
I, I have a question.
He didn't vote on that, we didn't.
Can I, can I just make, make a comment? I'm having just a little bit of trouble mandating the, the thirty hours, and if they don't have the thirty hours now, then they have to go out and get those thirty hours because of this reason. What is, what is the reason why we have decided to eliminate the requirement for this year's graduating class? I would say, I would say that the reason why we've chosen to eliminate that is because we don't want our students out there feeling it necessary to, to go out into public and get those, um, those additional community service hours, that we think that with, that could possibly be putting them into an unhealthy situation during the pandemic. So if that is our reason for even thinking about excusing the graduating class from two years of community service, how then can we be okay with telling them that if they only have fifteen hours?
Right.
Have to go out and get their other fifteen hours?
Question.
I'm having a little bit of a problem with that, so, um, Ms. Bells?
I want to echo what, um, Ms. Bossitt just wrote in the chat, why is this just geared towards the seniors? Last time it was all four grades that we waived, because how are the other kids going to make up their fifteen hours if they are not able to do it this year for their upcoming graduations?
So, um, Ms. Shumway, will you work that into your amendment, please?
I'd love to.
And can you work that amendment in there too?
I want to address that, because I don't think the, um, I, I think it's a much more complicated issue to look at it beyond the, we have another year plus to make a decision about what, how it affects next year's seniors. And at some point, we're not dealing with the COVID issue, we have to sort of figure that all out, so I'm not comfortable making a decision uh, tonight, that's going to, that's going to necessarily impact freshmen, sophomores, or juniors. Um, I, I think to the extent that we and know what the next three years are going to look like, we could make that, but I don't have a clue what's going to happen after this year, and-
Right, right, but how, how are the kids going to high school this year going to make up what they're still going to be held accountable for, for this year?
We don't know that, we don't know that they're going to do that, and we're not, we don't worry about it until they're, I mean, we don't specifically worry about it till they're senior year.
I have a suggestion. Can we suspend the community service requirement for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year in general? And then clarify that the twenty, the class of twenty twenty-one, to receive their half credit, will need to have a cu- uh, cumulative of thirty hours?
Yes. I think that's excellent.
Yeah.
That sounds great.
Cause we don't want our freshmen going out and getting their first-
Right.
Hours. We don't want our sophomores going out and get their second fifteen hours. Um, Mr. Dan DeWelly?
Um, and I think I'm kind of just throwing Amelie in here, but, um, I mean, I feel like I'd definitely be happy, and I feel like Amelie would also definitely be happy, um, if we could, we're, um, we're part on, we're on the leader, student leadership team, and I think that's definitely something we could talk about, doing community hours safely for seniors. If they do need to make that up, I feel like there's definitely ways that we could, I don't know, do something within the tutorials or something, but I feel like we could definitely make that work, I feel like we're just, uh, or, our, um, school system, and even the senior class is so much smaller that I feel like we can work in ways to, if those kids need those community service hours, I feel like we can definitely try to get them.
Thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Dan DeWelly. So how are we coming this Shumway?
I think, I think I have, um, I think I have it. Okay, so I moved to amend the motion to read as follows. Suspend the community service requirement for the twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. And the community service require, oh no, the class of twenty twenty-one will receive the half credit towards graduation if thirty hours, thirty community service hours have been completed. How does that-
Second.
Sorry. Does that take into account that we suspended the community hour requirement last year also?
Well, I think, well, it was, and I guess, because you just removed it from that policy, because the policy did-
Removed it from that policy, so.
Didn't we already do that, though? I feel like we did it last year in a meeting that we suspended it.
We did.
So, you don't need to.
If it wasn't part of this policy, that's not the only place it's recorded, is what I'm after. It's recorded someplace else.
Yeah, we voted on it last year at one of the meetings.
Yep. Very good, thank you. What do you think, Mr. Campbell? Does that work for you? So you want to make that motion officially? Or do you think you just-
Oh, I felt like I did it, and it was seconded.
I seconded it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bells. Any further discussion on this one? Woo-hoo, I'll take the vote, I, I'll take the, uh, yeah. Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Um, yes, as well, a motion passed unanimously, woo-hoo. Okay. Public comment. Now's the time, public comment, having anything to do with Winthrop Education, please type it in. Oh, I was starting to practicing a song the other day that I could sing, but it was two-part, and I couldn't find another person to sing it with me, so no go.
Bad. This is the only time we could sing, because we're more than fourteen feet apart.
You're right. As long as you don't spit on your screen, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, Chairperson Guy, while we're waiting, could I just, uh, ask the, the committee to entertain a, a thought from me? Um, I, I know, I think we've gotten very comfortable with this Zoom process, but I would really like to suggest that the next meeting on the, on the sixteenth be an in-person meeting for obvious reasons.
I've thought about that some, um, and I think an evaluation in person is much better than Zoom.
That wasn't the obvious reason.
I was going to say, that wasn't the obvious reason.
Uh, however, we started Zooming when we had eighteen cases a day of the virus in the state of Maine, and now we're up to two hundred, two hundred and fifty a day. Um, so I wonder if, I wonder if it's justifiable to hold a meeting.
Is there a way to have only school committee members present? Because most of it's going to be an executive session anyways, and then open the Zoom to the public before and after, or however we have to do that legally?
Well, I'm just, actually, it's, it's the stuff we're going to do before the executive session that I'm, I'm thinking. And what I'm kind of looking at is, I've been looking at the numbers of students, uh, students, of community members who have been joining in, uh, via Zoom, and, and it really hasn't exceeded the fifty, which is our limit collectively. Um, so I just think it would be a, a fitting meeting to have in person to, uh, in person, provide our well wishes and such to our, our members who are not going to be with us anymore. I, I just, that feel, would feel really awkward to do that via Zoom.
So, I've been thinking about this a lot, too, and initially I was like, yeah, of course it has to be in person, but then I started thinking about it. We've, we've eliminated all sorts of those types of ceremonies and celebrations for our students this year, and so I, I wonder if it would be a little, I don't know, it just seems like that this is the atmosphere that we're in, and so, yeah, it stinks, but our students have sacrificed, and we've asked them to do that, so I kind of feel like maybe we should do the same. So, that was my thought.
Good.
A little double standard-ish.
So, I mean, hey, I feel like, yeah, I've been doing this for nine years, I'd like to get my plaque in person, but at the same time, no one else is, you know, the seniors didn't have banquets for their sports teams or any of that, so I kind of feel like they're not able to do that, then, um, it would seem a little bit wrong for the school committee to do it. Sadly.
Thought of it that way, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I just, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be- I just, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be repetitious, but I just don't think it's justifiable with the, with the numbers of, of virus that we have going on. So that's my point of view.
Though respectfully, I think the reason we went to the Zoom meeting wasn't necessarily because of the numbers in, of COVID. It was because we had a couple of issues that we, at one point, we had what, ninety-something people um, attending, and then we were down to seventy-something people, and um, tonight, we were probably at twenty-two, twenty-three at the, the most, but I'm fine. I, I, I have a lot of, I, I, I respect that opinion. Um, Kristen and Jenny, and it really is, um, you know, it, I think it's, it's probably the right thing to do. Um, it just, you know, it, it just doesn't feel right. And so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable. If you two are comfortable with that, then certainly it's not my dog to fight, so to speak. Like, whatever, you know what I mean?
Yeah. You can just take like a, do a big write-up in the advertiser for me or something. I'm kidding. Honestly, do not do that.
AJ Charlie might be able to do a feature on you.
Oh, God. Please, no.
Okay, seeing nothing here for, um, public comment. Sue?
Yes?
Would you care to adjourn us?
I would love to. I moved to adjourn.
No, you can't. You've missed the school committee report, and I'm particularly interested in what Josh and Emily are gonna say, okay?
We're after nine o'clock. Do we have to vote?
We have to vote to stay here, yeah, past nine o'clock. Can I just see by a raise of thumbs if we are okay to go to, uh, I apologize for missing school committee comments. Um, is it okay if we stay a few more minutes and listen to school committee comments? Thank you, everyone. Okay, I apologize. Ms. Dykett?
I just heard that Shannon Bellows, um, became Speaker of the House, um, which means we've lost a representative. Um, because she obviously will take over that position. Um, so just sort of putting that out there as well. Um, otherwise than that, um, I'm so pleased that we have something in place, hopefully for s, for winter sports and programming for these kids. Um, and I can appreciate Joel being nervous about it, but um, having gone through two or three different types of remote and everything else, um, I am curious to where there is evidence that it's school spread is happening. Um, I was Googling and, um, the articles that I was finding were, um, you know, dated November sixteenth, eighteenth, and they were, they were still from Dr. Shaw saying that is not spreading in schools. So I'm just a little curious about where this new information is coming, that schools are now becoming sort of hotspots.
It was announced to the community that we were having a meeting today. It was not announced.
Oh, and then my other comment was, um, our school committee, and I don't know if Tiff's still on here, oh, Tiff is still on here. Someone had just mentioned that, uh, to me, um, that's, that our school committee meeting minutes and videos have not been updated since October seventh.
Yes, they have.
I went on the school page and couldn't find it, the district page.
I think the problem is that I forgot to put the new links up for the web, the videos, and I'll do that.
Oh, okay. They're, they're not on the district page, then. They, where would it?
They are on the district page. I have not, the videos live on YouTube, on our YouTube channel, on YouTube, and I just, it's my mistake. I forgot to put the links, and I will do that tonight before I go to bed.
Don't worry about doing that tonight.
Onto the website. I'm sorry about that. That's my fault. They are up on YouTube. Yep. And that's my fault, so I apologize. Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you.
Please don't stay up late tonight.
Yes, don't worry about it tonight.
Anything else, Ms. Dykett?
Nope, that's it.
Mr. Petrowski? I don't see his name.
We lost him.
I'll leave him to last. Ms. Bells?
I don't have a lot to report, just I really enjoyed meeting, um, our new school committee members. Um, it was nice to spend time with them and get to know them. And I got to be there to swear them in, so that was kind of an exciting thing for me.
Cool, thank you. Ms. Shumway?
I don't have anything.
Ooh. Okay, second call for Mr. Petrowski, who was the one that reminded me that I've forgotten it. Let's, let's, wait a minute, did something come up?
No, I was just calling Melissa, send me the link about schools.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Um, and, and I have nothing as well, except to, you know, the same old sign-off that I've had since COVID started. Thank you, uh, just the fact that we're still in school four days a week, I think, is a testament to everybody's adherence to, um, CDC guidelines. And I just want to encourage all of us over these holidays to, to stick with it. And once again, it's not a, it's not a good time to be rebellious about these things, but rather to be cooperative with, um, with our CDC and, uh, our administrators and our teachers. So thank you all and keep up the good work, please. That's all I have. No, Mr. Petrowski, right? Being none. Sue, you're on again.
Are you gonna ask our students?
Yeah. Good thing I only have one more meeting to go, isn't it? And I have, if you look at my list here, I have your names here, too. Because I know Janet was gonna make a snarky remark. So I apologize. Mr. Dan DeWelly?
Um, man, Joe's not here, and he wanted to hear. I don't know what he wanted to hear, but I don't know. But, um, I, I'm just, just gonna say, uh, the student leadership team, uh, met today and were just talking on ways to strategize, um, to get our lunch count, count up, which I think is very important. Um, I think, uh, I think, um, I'm very excited to see what we do. Uh, we've met with, uh, with, uh, the other head of kitchen besides Chef Aaron. Um, man, I feel awful that I'm blanking on the name right now. Uh, Mr. Campbell, maybe, I don't.
Diane DuBois.
There we go. Um, and we met with her, and we're trying to formulate a survey right now that we're gonna send out to our student body to see, um, what we could maybe improve on and maybe see if, uh, having lunch choices up would, uh, before, uh, the day starts, um, would be more beneficial, but this is all I have right now.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Groob?
Uh, the High School Student Council has been meeting regularly, and Ms. Dusset and our great president, Josh, and the other members have been working together to kind of think of things to boost morale and increase participation in the student body. So we've done some fun, like, school-wide activities. Um, and we just started a new fundraiser, so hopefully that will help out. And, uh, the Angel Tree program is also happening right now, and it seems like a lot of the students and staff are participating, so that's really great, and all of that is going really well.
How are you working the Angel Tree this year?
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
How are, how are, uh, my internet is getting unreliable. How is the, uh, how are you working the Angel Tree this year?
Um, there's like ribbon hung up on one of the hallways, and then there's two pieces of paper. There's a colored copy and a white copy that has like information about uh, the kids and what gifts they want, and those are like attached to the ribbon, so you can, if you're going through that hallway, you can take the top copy. And so you just touch like which paper you're, you want.
I, I know that in the past, some adults in the community have come in and, you know, grabbed a person's name or request, but that's probably not, that's probably sort of frowned upon this year.
Yeah, I haven't, um, seen, I don't think really parents come in other than, actually, I don't know if they come in to pick up their kids, but, um, yeah, so no, there's no parents coming in. But, um, it looks like a lot of teachers have taken them, and yeah, so.
Um, I would say this, Jenny, if, if there's a community member that would like to help out, um, they certainly could email Ms. Dusset, and I'm sure Ms. Dusset could point them in the correct direction. Thank you.
Yeah, there's also in town, Pat Harris, um, coordinates um, local families. I don't know if she's the one that, um, provides you all with names or not, or if this is a different group, but if you want that information, you can message me, and I can give you her email address. Um, and she all, she has information from families. I think she's the one that, that the forms that go home to families and they can fill out, that she's the one who coordinates those families.
Yeah, she did. Uh, Pat Harris is the one who coordinated it for the school, too. So you could, we don't, we don't have all of the tags. I think she kind of spreads those out to a lot of different places, so if, yeah, if adults in the community wanted to get some of those, they could definitely get that, uh, get those tags, um, through ways other than the school.
Thank you, Ms. Groob. Um, Ms. White writes in that there's also something similar going on at the middle school. Well, does anybody see any reason why I shouldn't, um, add Ms. Bells to go ahead and adjourn the meeting? Oh, okay. Well, for the third time, Ms. Bells, it's all yours.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, just give me a thumbs up. All of us that are present, make it, this, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Melissa, for your, your text.
Thank you, everybody. Hi, everyone, thank you.
Thanks, Tiff, for putting that on there, too.